Well. Well, let's see. I was just thinking, I just think. Let's see, I thought we had more of our team here.
Well, we're expecting Ashton and otherwise I think.
I didn't see Melissa's.
Lois said, let me know when I put out the dates that she. Because she's over in kids up county.
Great. And then that's listening to Shree is Shree online?
Shree is, well, essentially she's she might be, but she's.
Right. She said if she wasn't doing too much, she joined. Can we see for the group for this?
We've got two in Lake Forest Park and then one.
One of them is me.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, so we don't have for there. Okay, well, then great. I think that everyone's accounted for. You know, here we go. Oh, no, here we go. Extra minute. Okay, very good. Well, hello, welcome. I guess we'll call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. So we are officially for prosperity calling the meeting to order and welcoming a roomful of lovely guests who will be working with over the next eighteen months. So with that, I think let's move into introduction. Do we want to?
Want you. Get approval of agenda.
And then we'll go from there. Okay. Okay. David, do you want to read our acknowledgement? Thank you. The second.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse food, but native peoples. We have called this area home for more than 2,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to eliminate, illuminate the longer history of this land. We call it a relationship to the history and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European American immigration again.
Thank you so much. On the agenda, have you all had a chance to go with any? On the question, could I get a motion to bring it to the table? Move into a second to approve the meeting minutes? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing then all those in favor of adopting the agenda to ask published, please say aye. Those, okay, very good. Aye. Then that consists to the meeting minutes. Have you all had a chance to review those? Sorry for missing. I was traveling last time, but you did some really good work. So hold on. Any comments on the meeting minutes? I mean, that is changes. Love a motion to bring it to the table. Second, second, excellent. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as published, say aye. Say opposed. Thanks. That seems fair.
And Nick is always there amazing.
Yeah. Okay, meeting dates, our next meeting date is, is it scheduled or to be based on? Open. Okay, super. Anybody see any problems with our regular August meeting? We'll check with others. All right, that brings us to citizen comments. Do we have anyone joining us over Zoom that would like to make comment this evening?
That's just the three of us here.
Sorry. Okay, well, super. We have nobody joining us tonight. Then we're ready to start old business, which I think we should start with some introductions.
Yeah, so we have a new plan commissioner. Thank you for joining commission. We're really glad to have you. And so we also have our consultants and the conference and plan date here. And so Christina Hayward, would you like to introduce everybody?
Yes, thank you. So I'm Christina. I've done a little bit of work in Lake Forest Park before. Some of you may recognize me from the town center process a couple of years ago. I'm now with SCJ Alliance and I'm the project manager for the COPLA and UPLEA. And on my team are fair peers who are not here tonight and also we live in consulting Park here tonight about housing.
Yeah, so excuse me, we just came from level one of four. I'm David Vescott with a consulting group associated there. So we're based out of Portland, Oregon. Later, we're through the state economics and housing specialists there. So we're just fear heading that part of the comprehensive plan. Not at the pleasure of working in Lake Forest Park before, but we together with Andrew and others in our team have a lot of experience currently and in the past and working on with a number of your neighboring jurisdictions on their comprehensive plans. So very familiar. Getting more and more familiar every day with all the newest legislation that's we're sort of going to be working through together with you related to housing and those requirements. So I'm happy to be here today.
And might I ask each of you to speak in your best almost outside voice because of the Zoom for the recording for? Yes, thank you so much.
I'm Andrew Oliver, also as leading consulting group. Everything David just said, basically, yeah. Glad to be here. Looking forward to working with you all on this plan. Yeah.
Thank you.
And for your honest sake, around.
I'm fantastic. I've been on the fighting fish and cream. So pretty important, something like that.
I gave you a lot of, I've been gosh, two years.
I'll just chime in and say, well, this is my first meeting. I did do four years on the shoreline. So hopefully that'll bring some tools to.
Or a body council liaison.
Phil, Phil City Administrator. City five years now and I will be your bridge and Steve, the name the SCJ.
Very good. And I am Maddie Larson. I've been on your planning mission for a while. Before I was on campus, yeah, I don't. We were dying to Thompson fighting, I think. Six years. Yeah, I'm almost six years. I'm five and a half years. Yeah.
Great. So I've been here 19 years and this is my last.
Nick Holland, senior plan.
All right, but tell us Steve about your scout for the town center.
I'm still going through therapy.
Which actually the scene helped us in the tail end.
I did. I did some work on the development regulations side of things.
Which was fantastic. So actually, I had the privilege of being able to serve on the selection committee for our consultant and we were very enthusiastic about the expertise they were bringing to the table and and how receptive they were to our questions and some of our requests, including on housing, you know, making sure that we're framing this, not as you know, how we do what everybody's doing, but how do we comply with law while maintaining, you know, the values of our community. So their willingness to, you know, really think like residents and be in touch with not just state law, but you know, residential values was super important. So thank you for.
Great. So we have a presentation that Christina and the team have prepared. And just a kind of address as your agenda relates to just you kind of what they're thinking in terms of the public engagement process. And then, you know, the probably the most challenging part of this update would be figuring out how to deal with the new requirements for you know, meeting the housing, you know, income checks. Now, not only is it just, you know, capacity. Now it's like you have to to show how people of different income would be able to, or this could be built, you have the capacity somehow to do that. So it probably involves talking about zoning, you know, some areas slightly different, we're changing the way our permitted useless work. So so this Andrew. David, sorry. Andrew, David are going to talk a lot about that. Christina, you're going to start off talking about public engagement and just general introduction to the team. So now did you want me to start the slideshow or this Andrew is going to cover it all?
If you wouldn't mind starting.
Sure.
My slides. I, there was a incident with my charging cable where it's still at my house. So I have to tag along. It was very. You were thinking about the pizza going up for it. So we. While Steve's getting that hold up. You know, we we just started with a little driving tour of the community, part of the community. And it's really amazing as we're driving around, thinking about some of these topics that we're going to be talking about housing and inclusion. Anyway, so as we're as we're driving around the community, thinking about how we're going to work through some of these topics. Really amazing, just the variety of of neighborhoods and how all of the topography really impacts things. And so it's definitely not a one size fits all approach. And I'm really looking forward to diving in. So with that, here we are today, our first touch on the COPLA update, July 26. All right. So tonight's meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the project generally. We're going to talk about the project schedule and how we see working with a planning commission for the duration of the work. And then we're going to talk about public engagement, including our initial thoughts on the public participation plan and what a planning commission's role will be specifically in the public engagement process. And then I'm going to turn it over to Leland to start talking about housing growth allocations and all of these. I put you in at the bottom, but please feel free to jump in anytime you have a question. If there's no, no formality here about that. Okay, so I'm sure you all have had some, some discussions already about the comprehensive planning process, but just, just so that we all start off on the same page. I wanted to include a project overview. So in Washington, there's kind of a nested approach to how planning works and how development happens in a jurisdiction. And that really starts with the Growth Management Act and ends with the local comprehensive plan and its implementation actions. And the Growth Management Act requires a periodic review and update to come into compliance with recent legislation, planning policies, changes in regional planning policies. All that stuff gets filtered into the local comprehensive plan. And so it's really important to have this periodic update. In King County, periodic updates are due at the end of December next year, 2024. And part of our review process, we have some mandatory compliance elements with the King County can life planning policies. This is where we start to see some of the gross allocations for housing units and jobs. Changes from the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 framework, which talks about high capacity transit and how growth distributed based on where those transit networks are. And then, of course, all of the recent legislation about housing and climate from the last few years. And this was just a discussion this year. One of the biggest pillars of this process is having truly meaningful public engagement, not just you know, check the box public engagement. This is a community that we know is really vocal, really interested and really passionate about where they live and what makes it, of course, very special. And so having a meaningful public process is going to be a really, really important piece of our work. The project schedule at this point looks, looks like this. So we've got about 18 months to complete a substantial amount of work. May be able to, is there? Yeah. That's great. Okay. All right. So this is it's a sort of simplified schedule where the community engagement and the adoption processes are shown together because this is where a lot of the planning commission work is going to occur. And I thought it was important to show it alongside community engagement. So you can start to see where all of those different touch points happen between yourselves and the broader community and the events that we are going to be putting on for this or attending for this project. So we're, we're currently at the end of July 2023. So that's the first dot on the top line in that blue highlighted box. And this is, this is our kickoff for the project and talking a little bit about what your expectations are for, for your role and what you really want to see in terms of public engagement.
So just a question.
Yeah.
So the difference between a planning commission working meeting, is that just additional meetings? To these or these meetings that we always have, what, what do you think?
So when I, when I use the term working meetings here, this is when we're going to be diving into the element topics. And this is where we'll have some, some chances to talk about what's in, what's in the element, what updates we see that are needed to comply with all of that, this stuff, all of the regional and state requirements. And when we get into the recommendation meetings, at that point, hopefully you all are really comfortable with how we've how we've addressed those needed updates and the methodologies that we use for that, what the goals and policies are. And so those will be your chances, those recommendation meetings will be your chances to make any last polishing comments before sending a recommendation to city council. So, so we've got a total of six working meetings in addition to this meeting. So we're going to have to double up on some topics. So know that these, these meetings are going to have a lot of information in them and we're, we're going to have to have some serious discussions. So we'll, we'll be sending some homework for you guys to do in advance to make sure that we can move as efficiently through this, this project as possible. We really don't have a lot of flex time in the schedule to, to get too far off track. We've got potentially a little bit, but not a lot. So it's going to be really important that you're reviewing material and coming prepared to the meetings to have a good discussion. And we're going to, we're going to try and do our best with the draft information that we're providing to have some prompting questions for you to consider as we're going through the.
Christina, I think what we talked about is what we talked about. I think commission is, you know, even if you're covering more than one element, which you're all very familiar with. You're, you're going to get a chance to, you know, weigh in on the draft sort of policies. Then they're going to go make changes for those and you'll get to see here's, here's, here's what we got out of our last conversation. And then you can say, yeah, you got it or you didn't get it right. And then ideally, you know, there'll be a chance to go through the whole thing again at one of these recommendations. So you get three touches to, you know, to make sure that, you know, things have been addressed. You know, since you don't really have to, you know, start from scratch, you know, then probably in most cases you'll be able to handle probably two or three elements. These guys are running into this like that.
Yes. And there are going to be some elements that are likely to have a lighter, more focused update, pretty streamlined, simple, and we're going to group probably more of those together. And that'll free up a little bit more time for some of the heavier topics. It's like housing, which will probably have its own meeting just because of the different complex, weird complexities from all of the recent legislation that's been adopted. So we're, we're going to try and balance the effort as much as possible. But just note that these are, these are likely going to be some hefty meetings to work through and it's we're doing, we're doing our best to, to make it manageable and you will have two touches for each topic plus that final review in the recommendation meetings to, to hopefully feel really good about where the draft is that you're recommending for city council.
But I, but I interject right now. Plan Commission, I want you to know that you have a statutory role here. It's not just an advisory volunteer role. And to the extent there's anything that you want to see addressed or something that isn't in the plan, you have the ability to have an independent voice. It's not just a reactive voice. So I wanted to emphasize that. A good example is the reasonable use exception. Work that was done, which was done on the committee's own initiative. Second, high capacity transit definition just really bugs me because it's based on the BRT. Our being in a high capacity transit zone is based on the BRT, but we're actually losing overall bus service. And we don't especially like the BRT clients and, and we're losing our beloved 522 bus straight to downtown. So it's kind of like we have a lot of the disadvantages of not being a high capacity transit area, but yet we're stuck with the definition and being caught in that umbrella. So it's going to be a challenge as we move forward because the rationale for it almost doesn't really fit our community anymore. Well, until it's in, we're, do we have to abide by? Oh, that's a big question. Yeah. It won't be at the earliest they said. Twenty twenty seven now or twenty eight. Yeah. Yeah. So, so that gives us a lot of time. So that's a question. That's, thank you, Maddie. That's, I forgot that that was a something we had talked about before. Also, we have Parks and Recreation Board, Climate Change Committing and a Tree Board. And I assume you know all this, but we're going to have death points of the intersection with those groups on the relevant topic. So it could be a giant needle. Just wanted to flag that on liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board. And they're going to have a parallel public process almost running on the master plan for like property. So it's going to be challenging in terms of public engagement. We'll have to try to coordinate some of that public engagement timeline and events. Maybe we can do part one, part two at some meetings, for example. So just a thought on that. And last but not least, a subject that the community has mentioned to me many times, the lakefront has silted in where our civic club is and where our parks are right now. And so there is a need for some habitat restoration in the form of dredging, which is often controversial. So just addressing that in some way that balances environment with the fact that we really need to do that. And we know it's going to take a while to get through the, what, seven entities permanent process, something like that. Yeah. But some, if, if we could keep on the radar acknowledging that that is, if we can have that be some kind of balanced element of the coverage. It might not be on your immediate radar, but since you're here and presenting, I thought I, I'd like that one. So that was all I wanted to say about, you know, the intersection, because I haven't met you all before. So just a few thoughts to kind of help us coordinate through the process. So if you thought it was complicated, there's a few more complications.
Yeah, I, I thought in the minutes, some notes about dredging, I was wondering where that came from. That's good to know. And some excellent points about the need for coordinating with other boards and commissions. Yes, I'm hoping that we'll be able to do joint meetings when those topics come up so that we do have, have their input or if we do need.
Or at least think about it so that we don't have conflicting.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be really great to have, to have a joint meeting in those instances to have that really good cross collaboration, cross qualification of ideas. And thoughts on this work.
Thank you very much for giving us a time.
One question. So on this timeline, is deliverable at the end of that blue box kind of a final recommended update to the comprehensive master plan? And would that also be accompanied by zoning updates or would that come later?
That could come later.
Yeah, so there are a lot of, a lot of deliverables in the process to get to that point. At the end of the blue box, at the end of the recommendation meetings, that deliverable is a essentially a recommended draft of the plan that goes to city council that is accompanied by some, there'll be a preceding memo documenting recommended updates based on the, the review checklists that are published by Department of Commerce and PSRC. And also a memo summarizing our recommended updates to the development regulations, both to address the checklists, but also to address updated goals and policies that will need to be implemented by those churches. So there's, there are a few different documents that that will be available at the end. And then there are some interim deliverables that will, they're either working documents or they'll be rolled into what have those finals or the rules as well.
You make a really important statement that in terms of this work, something that we will want to pay attention to are where there may be gaps between these policies we're recommending and current zoning so that, that we almost are kind of creating our work plan for when this ends. So we're going to need to dive in. And I think something also that I've learned through the extensive town center work that we did and the reasonable use exception work we did, so we don't have to resolve everything. And I think, you know, hindsight's 2020. There were some things we probably should have just labeled sooner and included that in our memo to the council. You know, there wasn't time for us to resolve this. We grappled with that and we put it under resolution for recommendation. Or, or here was our concern with that recommendation. And I think that so that we don't get stuck with, you know, from a timing standpoint, with the limited time we have, we, we're not adopting the policy the council is. And so we.
We like the options, though.
So they are, they're going to take it apart anyway. So I guess there are some strategic questions to ask for themselves. And that's one way that we can save time. It's where there's really naughty issues that we just don't have the time to deal with. We can, we can pass on the council as, as questions, you know, for them to consider. So.
And hopefully if you see us getting stuck in these conversations, you could put up the red flag and say, maybe.
This would be one of the things that we pass, but or circle back to the same time, but otherwise, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that there are probably also, I mean, council member Bodhi, I'm sure you're going to be attending these planning commission meetings as well. And so you might be able to go back or provide some, some direction or feedback along the way, especially if we're seeing some big issues that are challenging in our, in our first review to maybe inform the discussion when it comes to a second review for that topic.
Yes. So in general, we do like to let the planning commission do its work, but there could well be some, you know, suggestions that we have. But overall, we, we like to see the planning commission do its work. And, and I, as I said, where there are disagreements, the, the, knowing what the two viewpoints were, even if it's not specific options of language, that is very helpful for us.
Great.
I have one quick question about that topic of implementing regulations and how far we're supposed to go with maybe suggesting where the council should go. I work for the county and a lot of my colleagues right now are just working like crazy on meeting the best available science update requirements set by the state. So your regulations now have to be updated with latest science. I'm just curious, what is the city? How is the city planning to meet that bar?
Well, depends on where you're talking about. They have various regulations that are usually the point where.
Right. So what do you think, make recommendations about any changes to?
I think, I think we would, that would be sort of a separate project, right? Unless, unless we know, you know, there's some language that I'm getting emails from DOE and other agencies saying, you know, if we want to be involved in the process. So if maybe they're, you know, put together a draft, we send that to agencies for review and they can weigh in and say, you know, you need to cite this in the COPLA and then update their various regulations. So I think we'll have a little time to work on that. Once you set the plan on to the. You know, once you you set the uh plan on to the um council, you'll have some time. Be thinking about what do we need to do to update regulations and be consistent.
I just think one point to your question is within six months of an update, the housing. So I think Steve's right. During that time, city councils. Pulling through your recommendations, you can circle back and start having that discussion. I think that should like whether they're changing based on what you said in the plan to city council.
You know, I wanted to uh also point out to an optics issue that can can come up with the community. And that is that we're working on this. At the same time and even uh after there is major outreach. And so I think just thinking about how what we're hearing from the community filters into our conversation so that from an optics standpoint. It doesn't seem like we're marching ahead of we're gathering their feedback, but we should show how that feedback gets incorporated into our. Conversation. It's just on this chart alone, it's sort of, I don't, I don't, it it doesn't demonstrate where those relationships are.
Sure. Yeah, um and that's something that's gonna be a little bit more clearly uh defined and described in the public participation plan. Um and it's it's important to me personally to have a lot of transparency and accountability in public outreach because it's. Really frustrating and I think it undermines a lot of trust in the process if people don't understand how their investment of time and energy to make comments. Is being reflected in that final document. Um and so we're we'll be keeping a record of the. Information that we've gotten from the public and so that will be part of that comp plan draft. Um and it uh will also show as part of that, perhaps we'll have discussions about what we've heard with respect to each topic and then we'll show. Um when those comments can be informed, we'll show how that should change. Okay, so other quite any other questions before we move on?
Just a question of if it's being provided out to us.
The slideshow?
Yeah. Steve's guy in his email inbox right now. I'll see if there's anything. No, we touched on everything. Okay.
Is is there a website? I can't exactly read all the fine print. Is there a website then? For the comp plan?
But but I'll I'll email this presentation out so you can.
Yeah, I understand. Maybe um.
I assume so. Yeah, they they already said they will.
All right, so um our public engagement uh framework for now looks looks like this. So there are gonna be some ongoing outreach efforts. Um these are primarily gonna be led by city staff and supported by the SCJ team. Um these are typically going to be some kind of uh digital or virtual uh engagement options. So that. Includes the website. Um there will be uh. Uh we're still working through the details, but my request is that there is a uh a comment box so that people can submit comments at any time. Uh versus only at a specific event uh so that there can be some some ongoing um. Ongoing communication with project staff. Um and then uh that will also be supported by social media based outreach just to engage through. The the platforms that the city uses there as well. Um and then there there will also be some amount of. Print materials supporting that, like flyers, note notify for events and. Um materials available at city hall um like like usual. Uh and then we've got a. A total of three major that's planned right now. So the first is a visioning survey that. Looks at the the current vision statement and uh asks people to talk about how well that reflects um. What what they think the vision of Lake Forest Park will be in twenty years. Um and then also what their what their key values and priorities are. For planning and growth and development in that timeline. Uh and then uh we'll have a workshop um that will be a housing, transportation and infrastructure workshops. Since I think that that's um based on based on what I've heard so far. It seems like the the combination of. Added housing density um on all single family lots uh is um not well aligned with infrastructure. Availability, specifically safe routes to walk, um for example. Uh so that workshop will be looking at how we can address state requirements while also understanding and respecting where Lake Forest Park is. Uh with how development has occurred over time and what infrastructure is available, but what what we need to do to improve that. Um and how and then a final event will roll out the public review draft of the plan. Um I think that this is gonna be some kind of open house um or town hall event. Um but. Welcome input on that. Um and then we'll have a series of minor events. These are gonna be primarily led by city staff, but as part of this. Um we'll be building an engagement kit, uh not not exactly a meeting in a box. I think it'll be a little bit more flexible than that. Um but a kit that would enable people, um community leaders, teachers, maybe planning commissioners to go out into the community and. Talk about the project and gather some input uh with their specific networks as well. Um and that's uh that's big picture, what we're thinking so far as as far as um the engagement framework.
So how long is this? This is this discussed with uh. As part of the uh the plan or the, we just wanna know, do we have, can we give some input here?
I welcome input.
Okay.
Uh and I have slides specific to each of these topics.
Okay.
Uh we can either talk about all of, okay. All right. I mean, they're not much more detailed than what I just went through. Um but uh so for ongoing outreach, I talked about the website. So this is where we're gonna keep a lot of project information that's available to the public. Uh including a project schedule uh and uh notifications for when when um. Events or meetings will occur where people can have their posts at the the comment forum that will be open at all times. Um partnered with social media um that has updates and some informal, hopefully fun opportunities to engage and then. Hard copy information available at city hall and other public events. So.
Well, I think in this case, there are some things kind of embedded in there like, you know, more detail on. On sort of how the website would be constructed, for example, to make it easier for folks to find information or. Uh one of the things that was challenged with our centers to figure out where we were in the process and where the most current draft was, where, you know, what issues have been resolved and what we're working on today. Um social media, you know, certainly has some sort of a campaign, like you said, five posts or two posts or in which channels. And then information at city hall, I think that um you know, there are many different sort of ways in which the city. Shares information with the community, um notifications, for example, but also uh with our, we have a citywide mailing. Newsletter, so making sure that we get into one of those and get scheduled in advance, right? So that. You know, it's not no river. We're like, wait, you know, we're well into the process and that should have been content in September's mailing or something. Um and so I think that that would be the only thing that I would give us to is to get some of the specifics down for those so that the windows of opportunity don't pass us by.
Yeah, that's some that's some good points. Uh we are uh we're working with the city. The city is going to be the ones. Um in charge of how that website uh is set up. Uh we're we're providing some some content, so we'll need to work together to. To make sure that that. I I'm gesturing at Phil because he's my.
I would also add, echoing Maddie's earlier point from our previous update processes where I wasn't on council. And I was on council for a part of it is what we heard from you. We were, we've been listening and what we heard from you is an important thing to signal. So it's not just to tell. Uh that for our community, it's really important. So in in all our materials, there should be some. Element of that or. Listening to you, we wanted to, you know, and because there are a lot of public processes that are checked off the box and. And we really need to have that interaction or the or we'll take more time. So just just a thought about that.
I do think we have to be careful about optics there as well, though. And so a lot of times, I think, community members see their information going. You channel through like a consultant agency, right? And then they get stuck there. But I think it'd be important that we that the community sees that this information is built into the planning mission, right? You're gonna help us manage it, right? But but we really are accountable for how that information is being circulated. What we're gonna do with that. How we're gonna talk about that.
That is a point that's very sensitive.
Yeah, so I think the difficulty in engagement of the commissioners, both the major and the minor events, it's gonna be key.
Yeah.
Um to make sure that, you know, we all have a role in that and, you know, at least are visible uh to our neighbors and our community members.
I'm glad to hear you say that. I'm really hoping for some strong and sure involved with this process um and potentially also city council members. Any other comments on this?
So I I do know that there was a communication that went out in the uh in the city newsletter, uh maybe a couple of months ago about. Our meeting and work together. Um maybe we get an update as soon as possible so that the community understands that. You know, that we're that we're inviting you all into this conversation as soon as possible.
And what to expect.
No, go ahead. Even though we don't have a contract here.
Oh, got it. Yes. Save the date. This is coming at you. The police department will take that connection night out next week and hand that those out and. They're gonna increase thirty three different parties. So we'll hand that out when it says same language means deadline is very near for the next print edition. Of our our newsletter. So, yeah, we're we're right now giving people heads up. This is coming at you. Stay tuned. Become engaged. So.
Opportunity is yoga, yeah, yoga in the parks, maybe ever be happy to go there to pass out those postcards.
Yeah, we're getting about fifty people again to each of the sessions. We've got three, there's three more coming up and possibly a couple more. So we have. A teacher who lives in Lake Forest Park who's interested in doing a few more sessions after that. So. Uh for Cory. But uh but that's that's a good opportunity because people have to sign it. So there's a table, you know.
I wonder if one of the like Lake Forest Park Elementary School, when the kids come back, would it like.
I I mean, we talked about this during the interview process and that this fall, which is when the. Lion Sheriff's Works being done is also an election year. A lot of hard back to school. There are a lot of, I I think that that it's even more important that we keep the message simple. You know, we bring people together. Here's what we're trying to accomplish and here's what you can expect next, you know, because uh it's going to be hard. To grab attention and then keep, you know, sustain it to sort of connect the dots that this had to do with comp plan, not like, wait, was that somebody stump speech?
Yeah, so people will really engage when there's a draft document of some sort. I think that's where the intensity will come up. So, right, yeah.
So maybe the initial, when we try to, you know, initially engage with the community, maybe we can have that. But this is where we, this is the kind of the timeline of the process. This is where, you know, you'll have opportunity to do this. Years will have a finish pot. Just kind of give everybody a really good heads up of when and how they can engage.
Those key talking points so that they see the same three points on the website, the same three points of the poster, the same three points from us at a farmer's market, you know. Um I I think we'll go along with, these are things you already know. I think what we're collectively saying is we're super glad to help. Review materials, get materials, get messaging out, just, you know, but but definitely use us to maybe. Like do final owning, you know, or at least give them, but um, oh yeah, this works, but that framing might be complicated for folks or whatever, like just. A little bit of editorial support and then certainly um, you know, to help you get the word out across anybody's.
That is great. I'm so excited by this enthusiasm. All right, let's go to the next one. Uh okay, so major events, I touched on uh these briefly. So um we've got. Kind of what what we're seeing or what we're thinking about for the events so far and kind of what the what the goals are about those. So the first would be this survey. Um and that's where we're confirming, confirming the vision. Does this still represent Lake Forest Park and where we want to be in twenty years? How has implementation from the last plan gone? Uh what's gone well? What's not maybe done so well? Um and then what's what's missing from the current comprehensive plan? We know that there's some housing and some climate stuff that's gonna need to be added. Um but from from the perspective of folks that are are living and experiencing of the city every day, is there other stuff that's missing that we will need to be aware of?
So if I made the point about this, we've all had this conversation prior to talking about uh, you know, reaching out to. Uh potential consultants. Um the whole issue of vision. Um I think at least I expressed that I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on that process. Uh I feel like uh I I like the idea of asking what's worked, you know, as what what's not worked. Right? Um but if if there's a way that we can, and and this is my personal opinion is that I think that a lot of. Uh organizations, communities get stuck on that vision process, right? And and this, the city did. The the visioning, the vision here is pretty good. Um but if there's a way that we can channel that process so that it's not, we're not putting a whole lot of resources or a lot of whole lines. Into that vision, uh recreating the vision.
Yeah, there's been um there ha- there has been some amount of visioning done in the recent past. So um. We're taking the approach of of confirmation of what's there with maybe some refreshing rather than. Whole whole lot starts or does that seem like that works?
Yeah, I think I've built on what David was saying, that to me, it's clear that the housing piece is a little more education oriented. Uh but the vision values and priorities survey survey, I think the way the way this is set right now with this three framing questions. I think you could turn it on its head and make it act like what is comp plan? And what informs your company? So you could say, and I'll plan does this. And here you have all these beautiful documents. You've got a hundred year. Vision, you've got, you know, vertical areas origins, you've got. Uh S H trees, legacy, but everybody have a number of documents. So it would educate the community that these community generated documents. Along with state law and regional expectations, you know, have informed your comp plan. And we're taking a look at it. For two reasons, to make sure it's in compliance with law and to make sure it continues to reflect the. The values of Lake Forest Park. So it's a little bit more education to say, here's what it is. You you have a voice in it. We don't need to re-litigate it. People will tell us if if there's something is skewed, but I would argue that most people in our community. Have no idea what the comp plan says. They aren't sure if the comp plan is policy or guidance to policy. And so I think we could get stuck and instead we should use it as education. Okay.
Thank you, Maddie. I think that's perfect. That's.
All right. I've written it down. Include the an educational component. What does a company do? Where did it come from? What other documents are there that feed into it or stem from it? Um and why are we doing this?
I do like the question, though. What has worked?
I I don't know if the community, that that's. It's it's a guiding, it's it informs what policies we work on as a city. It doesn't actually, it isn't policy.
But what's missing is really good.
But how is the community? We should ask ourselves that. Yeah. I think on our on our public engagement, it's education all the way. The community's not gonna, I mean, I don't mean to be insulting. I'm just saying, by and large, the community is gonna be like, I don't even know what the plan is. Much less, I'm not gonna read it. And I will have no meaningful feedback to give on it.
So um what we get uh when we ask this kind of question and often is basically. Um what hasn't the city been working on? Um and we start to see a lot of priority stuff, right? Show up there. I think it'd be better just to ask that question straight away and not in the what's missing from the comp plan. What do you see as the biggest challenges to your city?
Well, we we talked about four of those, you know, um kind of a report card. What 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 is? And what have we done? And and what um you know, what? You know, would would uh so you're asking the community, you know, what would be uh, you know, good to focus on? You know, the things that we didn't mention, which would be most of the bus.
I I I would, David, I think that could really be a distraction and not be a lot of.
It could just be like, you know, a quick update. You know, here's here's all things we've gotten fixed last comp plan update. And um. Now we talked about it as my work card. So it could just be, that's how you educate people with comp plan. These are kind of things. These are kind of things we're we're getting to, these are things that are still out there, and then just move on uh instead of uh spending a lot of time.
I think that's what council, uh, like commissioner, commissioner, Lois has recommended. That you call direct things.
We'll say, as a candidate uh before and recently, people do wanna tell you what they want from the team, you know. At a high level and you, when it doesn't matter if you call it vision or priorities, but or how do you see the future of Lake Forest Park? But people do wanna tell you a little bit about that. It may not be very well structured, but. That's where there's a certain amount of emotion and personal connection. So. I completely agree with you, Maddie. I'm just saying, even recently, you know, we get feedback on that. Uh, so. I do think having an element of that conversation where people can talk about what do they see for our future. I like the question. Like, where should we be heading for the next twenty years or something like that?
And I like that framing better than what's missing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just uh was reflecting on recent conversations.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Great.
Back to, can we back up to just two slides?
To the, to the framework?
Yeah. One more, yeah, uh, one more. I'm sorry, right here. Okay, so you say that major events are led by the S uh CJ team.
Yep.
And supported by city staff. Or at least one of those major events that we'd like to see the planning mission involved in that, so that we have that base.
You're involved in all of that.
Oh, okay, so you're up on that slide and.
I'd say you should post it, and they can be presenters. But, you know, the planning commission or the city could be the host. I I think the optics matter in our city.
So and we're, when we're talking about leading and supporting in this context, uh, we're, we're talking about like who's. Who's doing the presenting?
Yeah, yes, do the presenting.
My front work here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes, that makes perfect sense. Yeah, I'm just talking about the optics of who's meeting and is who's hosting.
Especially if this is a public document.
Okay, I can, I can send a revised uh revised slide deck. If that would be.
And maybe only one or two people will notice it.
We can have buttons. Asking me about the company. Okay, uh, and then the last piece of public engagement uh is the, what we'll call minor events. Um. We'll go to the next slide. Uh, so these are more of the the ad hoc opportunities, taking advantage of things like. The summers, summer stretch, is that what the yoga series is called?
Yeah.
Okay, you have it in the park.
Yoga in the park, um, the farmer's market, the national night out, uh, so really going to where people are already spending their time, so it's not an extra effort just to tell us something about this project. Um, and that's where we're hoping that you guys can have a lot of involvement since you're, you're here, you're participating in these activities. And uh. You're, you're part of social clubs, maybe you attend churches here. So really looking at ways that we can access networks a little more informally uh through this process. Um, and to support that, um, we wanna put together a meeting kit that's got some, some talking points and information about the project. Uh, that you can refer to. Obviously, you all will know a lot more about the project, but if um if there were another sponsor, uh, like, um, maybe you. Have a friend in the Kiwanis Club who wants to do uh an event on their own, um, you know, they would be empowered to do that by the contents of this kit, some activity ideas. Um, so anyone, uh, the idea is that anyone would be able to to take this um, this kit, which would, I mean, it's, it's not like a. Not like a box or anything, but like a series of of informational material and activity sheets, um, and they would be able to facilitate an event and return uh results back to the city.
I would mention two of our local nonprofits as places that offer those forms. So one or three, actually. Um, the Rotary, Lake Forest Park Rotary, the uh uh Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation and Friends of Third Place Commons. So those are three NGOs that are very active and often will host.
Yes.
All our events, and I see those as possibly being potential, you know, co-hosts or co-sponsors for minor events.
Well, I think you wanna write this down. So Rotary is the organization part of the nonprofit, um, but uh Chief Harden is actually in charge of scheduling our speakers, so. I don't know. We meet every Wednesday at seven thirty in the morning, so. Yeah. Or you can reach out to them. Wait, but we meet every Wednesday at seven thirty, so whatever, whichever Wednesday.
That's great.
Okay. We just need enough time to get over the calendar.
Sure. All right. That's public engagement. And I think that's, I think that's the end. Oh, well, we've talked a little bit about it. Um, how how do you wanna be involved a lot? Um, substantially, uh, both as a commission and potentially individually, I heard a lot of volunteering. Which is great, uh, and we've talked through priorities. So does anybody else have anything they wanna add uh about public engagement?
Um, I also wanted to welcome you, uh, Shereen. Uh, feel free to chime in, just come off of your mic if you have anything you wanna share, okay? Um, does anybody have anything else they wanna share about public engagement?
I guess like, one thing that's been rolling around in my head, I can. Imagine how public engagement works in the vast community like Forest Park. I'd like to understand how we're. Going to engage with some of the neighborhoods in South Gateway, uh, that you have less. From my observation, less civic involvement from residents in that area, and it's even honestly one of our, you know, it's kind of a key area in a lot of ways and has some of our best housing. The one part of Lake Forest Park that has more diversity to it, uh, both income, language, ethnicity. That's a different, it's a different um task to do engagement and do we have some organizations that. We could, or you, you know, to attach to, one of the things I'll do first, that neighborhood.
Well, luckily, one of our council members lives in Southern Gateway.
Okay.
So I think a council member, Goldman, can actually help with that. Uh, so, uh, so it's a very good point. Um, I originally lived in the Briarcrest neighborhood, which often Lake Forest Park forgets about. Um, so I always figured out the Briarcrest neighborhood myself because. Uh, my kids didn't go to the Lake Forest Park Elementary, they went to Briarcrest Elementary, though I lived in Lake Forest Park, so.
Exactly. Maybe one of those pieces expressed, look at a map and think of it as zones, you know, within Lake Forest Park, because I know there isn't. Uh, lowest probably the closest representation we have from the area north of.
Um, the north is, is unrich as in the.
Yeah, neighbors and all issues with the, or resident on the whole.
Yeah.
Um, so it might be nice to tackle zones to and figure out like what, where are, yeah, which opportunities. It could be that we go to one oh four and put up a table and.
I'd say those are the three that were people sometimes, we don't hear from people or they feel.
Until they're upset.
Yeah, those three pockets, yeah.
So, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, I just offer only because I don't know when we're gonna be talking about this again. Uh. The wild four is a great place and in the non-operating hours, so they're open for dinner usually. Um, but during the mornings, there's a, like a, a trailer, it's a coffee cart kind of thing, but on a. What do you call it? But anyway, that'd be a great place in the mornings as people are walking over that part of town for coffee. You know, to engage or setting up space in the third place commons on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, those are some other places that we could do outreach, which I'm sure each of us would be agreeable to volunteer a few. Hours, you know, to.
I thought we were here to take a public data. No, Heather's passionate about the comp plan rewrite because she's interested in how we take into account small businesses.
Right. Yeah, but she wants to open a shop, but there's really nowhere to do that here in the first part. That's sensible, so.
I like the idea of engaging local businesses in that process.
I could say that we could have a table sometimes that might have the comp plan. The lakefront master plan and the climate action plan.
Oh, what's going on?
Potentially, come, come see, and, you know, I realize I don't wanna detract from engagement in the comp plan or, but. On the other hand, there's some efficiency in that for these minor events, I'm thinking, you know.
It's probably there's a lot more down in your city compared to more.
Yeah.
One of us.
Or if it's, we're talking about picnic in the park or something like that, maybe, you know, we.
Yeah.
It's not your, it's not your problem, but so much, but it's kind of ours, you know, to make it a little organized for the part like.
Land is. Uh, the farmers market.
Yeah.
We've done that past where it was just one item or it's just come up and talk.
Right.
City representative.
Yeah. Especially if we have packets or some materials, you know, and we can take you back.
I should get more detail for all of those things, like the very specific, you know, the specific pieces we can. Add on or sign up or whatever, just let us know. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Uh, and so that takes us to the end of project overview and public engagement, and we're off. Uh, and running on housing now.
Okay, I'm gonna to hijack screen. Well, I just wanna reiterate, you mentioned how fantastic it is how involved you all want to be, because it is not always the case in terms of like in participation, just in general. Um, from a planning mission, so it does make me very excited to be part of this process and work with you all. So Christine also mentioned, you know, we have a compressed timeline uh bit on this process and there's a lot to cover and housing. And what we've been told is one of the big hot ticket items here, so that's why, you know, we will be having. Other sessions to go through all of the different elements and housing will be have its own separate session where we'll. Dive a lot deeper into things, but we thought it would be good to start off in this initial meeting to not, you know, still very early in stages, so we're not, we're not much to share with you today in terms of analysis and things like that, but just how we're gonna approach. Um, the housing needs assessment analysis and how sort of we will be approaching. Um, the new legislative requirements, but also just to hear from, from you guys on some big issues and challenges related to housing. But also to say that it's not gonna be, this is not the only or or chance you'll have to chime in on that, which has throughout this process by no means, just the, the very beginning in that regard. So just very briefly, what I'm gonna be chatting with you or Andrew, I'll be chatting through uh. This evening, so the planning targets, we all know there are targets that are sort of handed down that need to be accommodated in terms of asking regardless process, and so just to touch on that briefly. Uh, which relates, of course, these other items here, um, because it's not just about. Those, those targets, it also comes to what, what's within those, those numbers that are handed down in terms of. Needs at different income levels, different housing types, all of those.
I I hesitate to refer up to, but I think it is important to start with what we do have, you know, because we do have a lot of unused. Um, multifamily zoning capacity already in our city. I'm not sure most of our citizens know that. Um, we do have affordable housing requirements and incentives which we adopted at the same time as the town center. Uh, most of our citizens don't know that, and with the planning commission's help, we adopted much more flexible ADU requirements recently. So. I just what would like, whether we're talking to the community or writing our report, I'd like to start with the important base of what we have. Um, because I think we, we tried to work at this plus, uh, just you probably noticed, we have the King County Housing Authority Department complex in our city. Uh, which is a component of affordable housing, and I believe our rents used to at least be, yeah, a year ago, lower than all the surrounding communities. Our average rents based on those kind of customary rent surveys. So just wanna make sure that when we start, when we, when, before we dive in, we start by setting the table.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's, um, that's where we will be starting, yeah, definitely. Uh, and so that's when we say housing needs analysis or housing needs assessment, you know, that's sort of a technical term that goes into assessing. Where are we today? Where are the gaps? What might we need to do? Um, so the first component of that is a full sort of profile of a community profile and and housing supply profile, understanding. Where we are today, and then the next step is understanding, okay, well, maybe where are there some, some gaps or can existing. Um, code and then zones and and areas in the city accommodate maybe some of these growth targets and needs that have been um, been established.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
No, absolutely. So, so that sort of leads into the legislative requirements, but we thought it'd be good to just run through all these different legislative. That some of the, the big bills that have, that have passed recently and what that means just in terms of this process and how that's gonna relate to um, to this housing elements, uh, to make sure that those are being. Those needs are being met, but again, as was mentioned at the very beginning of this, that that's, that's a part of this, but it's not the central role of comprehensive planning process. It's not. It's our central role here, part of it is to make sure that those criteria are are met and fulfilled, so the comp plan can be accepted. Um, and and there's no issues in that regard. Um, but. How, how do we do that in a way that maintains the um, the character of Lake Forest Park or meets the goals and priorities that are identified. Prior to and during this comprehensive planning process. Um, and, you know, we, we mentioned, we spent a couple, uh, an hour and a half driving through the, the, some of your neighborhoods before this. Um, seeing, you know, some of these, these state mandates didn't necessarily take into account the unique character of every single community in in Washington, like Forest Park has some unique. Many characteristics and and challenges and things like that, and so that's, that's the main part of when we're talking about housing. Um, and this whole process really is understanding how do we do these for, um, you know. Keep these requirements, but do it in a way that that makes sense for Lake Forest Park. Um, and Andrew's gonna, gonna talk more to that as we get into it, and then have a question, but please jump in with any comments as you have in. Grab. So this is just to to point out that the uh housing allocation for Lake Forest Parks, this is um from King County. Planning policy, so it's eight hundred and seventy new housing units is expected by twenty forty-four. That's the, the green line there. The blue line here, this is just to show sort of a, a, the simple historic trend line of. Based on how many housing units have been, have been built over um, over the last twenty or so years, though it's extended out. Um, what that might look like. So it's, it's pretty close, but there is maybe a little bit of a, of a gap there in terms of those historic trends. Um, so part of this process is also gonna be understanding, um, where is that? Uh, that that gap get met, where in terms of the policy and areas in the cities and can new housing.
And I just say that I think we already, in our capacity, exceed the green line.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so.
Yeah, so it's not trying to.
I know, but it bothers me to see it just without the capacity line, current capacity line added to it, because it implies we have gaps. So to me, I don't like that. I personally don't like, I wouldn't want to use the slide with the.
Absolutely, so, yeah. Yeah, the purpose of the slide is only to talk about, uh, to actually just, I think it's important to see that the, the, the past and the forecast are, are close together in a way, which. Uh, which makes logical sense, because in many places, you know, we've seen the opposite occur, where there's either. Uh, you know, the, what's happening in the city doesn't necessarily line up with what the, what the policies coming down from the county are saying, or vice versa. And and I think, you know, um, but you're right about capacity, it's not shown here, and we also don't.
Down another line.
Well, the problem, well, the reason that it's on here is that, um, one of the things we're gonna be doing is looking at. Uh, the assumptions that go into that capacity number, and we know that, uh, you know, we've talked to Steve about capacity in. In the areas that you have already multifamilies, only you're saying, and um, but you know, there, there is some moving room, I think, in what the final capacity number. Might be, so we will definitely um be doing a much more thorough analysis, you know.
I just don't want you using a graph with this without um adding the capacity. And even if you have to average, because we don't know exactly how many units it would be or something, having that as a frame of reference.
Yes, yeah.
I feel like we have a lot of capacity, it's just. Having that as a frame of reference because I feel like we have a lot of capacity, it's just. For whatever reason, I mean, you can see what's happening on Lake City Way, which is kind of not necessarily the best version of density. Um, but, uh, we do have capacity.
May I ask if the housing units that are reflected in this? I- i- in this conversation include eighty years or is it just individual?
In terms of the, the historic.
Yeah, just, I guess the definition of housing here is. Presumably with single family housing, multi-family housing units.
It would be any, any unit.
But okay, and then where do we, I'm just curious where you get an eighty view, do we have a way of tracking how many A D U's around our community?
Be very difficult to explain to them. Because there's so many that were built, you know, before their re-regulation. Grandfather then. We can track, you know, what, how many have been done in the last, um, five or ten years, but. It's just a, it's a handful, okay, every year is between two and four more.
Oh, yeah. So.
Probably change.
And we'll get into that too, yeah. But I just want that base complete sense and we can include on here, it's, I mean, it's funny because in, in some cases.
People don't know that, that's why I was saying it, and to me, I would read this to me, oh, we have a gap, not that our gap is smaller than most.
I, I think the important thing, I think the reason that, that this started confusing and it's something that I. I have realized, saw this chart, yeah, we talked about this, is that it really, the allocation is what you're supposed to plan for. And it in, and, you know, uh, the, the trend line is just an extension of what's been happening if. You know, if they'll be tamed, it doesn't, but it doesn't imply that there's any, any. Really that, the, the, the top line should be like a ceiling, you know, kind of, and then there should be another ceiling above that. So anyways, it's, it's not that. And with that. Or we can, well, you want to talk about this, well, yeah, it's, it's the same thing for employment and. It's, it's also a tricky question, what has the. Employment growth and the employment allocation and obviously E S R C's employment figures for this forest park, if you can see on the left. Do fluctuate rapidly, you know, from year to year, for whatever reason, um, uh, that data said is showing this, so. It was a little tricky to sort of duplicate this for employment, but again, I just wanted to sort of point out here. That there's not a huge disconnect between policy and what's going on here, the, the sort of slow growth of jobs, you know. Has been relatively consistent, uh, notwithstanding the COVID pandemic, obviously, and what the county is expecting to see, if you see in the blue line is. More or less same as what's happening, so.
A little bit more pers- perspective on this, we did object to the county because we have very little commercial. Development, so to the extent we have employment growth, a lot of it's going to be. People working from home or home-based businesses, uh, just like our local, you know, just like our, uh. Our, uh, coffee cart, you know, businesswoman can't find the place to, uh, to locate. Yeah.
I think we're not counting some of this stuff, right?
And I talked about that during the interview, right, that, that's something that, that can be quantified to a certain extent, there's enough research now.
We did, we did lightly object to this number. Except we were told it wasn't really going to be that binding, um, so we didn't, you know, press on it, but it, it. We have very limited base for, uh.
And also the, um, it's, it's absolutely true, the, uh, sort of. Mechanisms for enforcement or repercussions from the employment targets are very different from the much more complicated housing. Okay, well, it kind of spoke with somebody, you wanna, yeah, well, just an overview is sort of. When we talk about housing needs analysis or housing needs assessment, what, what does that mean? And, uh, this is sort of the next time we talk to you in deep. Tell about housing will present, be presenting some of the findings from this process, but right, first things first. Community profiles of who lives in this, in the city, breaking that down by, by income rates of demographics. Um, and also housing units, how it's supplied, so. What are, how does that sort of community profile match with the supply and what's the rate in that regard? Types and sizes of units, income levels, affordability. And sort of after establishing that baseline, where are we today, that's when we then look into. Where are some of those gaps to be, whose needs are not being met, um, are some of the, you know, the, the lowest income level that. Those members of your, of your, um, community, is there, uh, a gap in terms of housing in that regard? Um, how is portability changed over time as well, you already mentioned, you know, rents last year seem to be affordable, they are increasing, that's. You know, the, the trend in the region, of course, uh, so what does that mean for members of the Lake Forest, um, Park community specifically? Work from home trends is something we, we just mentioned, um, there is enough research now that that can sort of be quantified in terms of. On average, how many people are working from home every day, and we've had some back and forth, um. With commerce and E S R C as well in terms of, that we can include those in, in our, in our accounts when we're talking about. Uh, that's more related to, to jobs and some of those job growth allocations, um, but that's, that's an important trend also to, to take account of. And then that brings us sort of to capacity as the last piece of this after looking through all these other components. And as some of your previous planning work has already pointed out, there, there is adequate capacity to meet these, these growth allocations from a. Sort of a gross scale, um, what some of the new legislation lays out is that it gets more fine-grained, is, is what about capacity? Need to meet some these specific income brackets and other housing types that need to be, um, need to be allowed for within. Each community now, uh, and so that's, that's where there's a little more nuance to that capacity question. And understanding if there are any gaps, where do those lie and how can those be accommodated through things like. Like the zoning code and other changes that could be made to develop code if necessary, um. In relation to the.
Can I just go faster on that? Um, you know, if you see what's happening in Shoreline. They have taken often. Before, um, they'll take a modest house that maybe a couple of years ago cost six hundred fifty thousand, but that cost eight hundred. Fifty thousand and a fairly good-sized lot and they'll cut down every bit of vegetation and put six. Uh, walled, you know, common wall townhouses with a few little plantings and. They caught, they sell them for a million bucks a piece. So it's more density, but it is a more affordability, it's a boon to the developer. And it actually took more affordable housing, uh, out of the market, uh, you know, so. That, that kind of a nuance, I, it's important for our community because we don't want those kinds of. You know, cut down every tree, uh, I'm not against townhouses, I just think that method. Environment and, and, yeah, worsens affordability, not only, yeah, fix the problem you said you were trying to fix by abzoning. Right, you've actually made it that things worse, and I think that that's the thing that, that is most interesting, sorry to, yeah, no, you got put. Like, it's just trying to return, yeah, um, the, uh, I think, I think the thing that. I've gotten in talking with neighbors is by and large. I don't really think when you start talking with individuals, anyone in Lake Forest Park is necessarily against. Uh, housing diversity, what they're opposed to is what we see in the region, which is something that's sold as. This helps with the housing crisis or affordability or whatever, or whatever, whatever. And in fact, the only person it benefits is the developer and, and we're seeing that in our community right now. Even just where we still have single-family zoning, often the little houses that could be fixer-uppers. Um, families that are, that are interested or that's appropriate for them are bidding against developers who are willing to pay. All cash, ten, twenty percent, all cash, whatever, really lucrative offer. Because they'll take down the house and build to the maximum envelope size, and so. On your supply side, where it's just one of the population's housing needs, I'm. I think I'm a little more interested on what is our supply, right, like, um. When we look at the, the. Total of all the houses, you've got it under types, sizes of units, what is the profile of housing in our community today? And what's that trend that we're seeing fewer units, like in the last ten years? Are we seeing fewer units that are two thousand square feet or less because they're getting replaced with thirty five hundred square homes?
Yeah.
And I don't know how you legislate for that, if you say, oh my goodness, ninety percent of our homes are twenty five thousand square feet or. Twenty five hundred square feet or more.
Yeah.
Or they're, you know, less than a thousand and they're in a multi-family. How can we sort of legislate that, sorry, we're full on, you know, four thousand square foot houses, but we need a whole bunch of fifteen hundred square foot houses. I don't know how we get there from a.
Yeah, I mean, unit size is, is a fascinating and really important question, I think, you know, in a lot of places and, um. There have been some attempts to, well, I was just recently reading a study in Portland, yeah, just because. We're from Portland, but also because the, the middle housing has been. In the, on the books for longer there than most places, so there's been some time to sort of study what works and what doesn't work at, at Portland, but it's good. And one thing I thought was really interesting on this exact point is, um. Was some cats on maximum single-family, new single-family construction, uh, core ratio. So they actually found, the, the first study that's kind of come out of this, that I thought the most interesting thing was exactly that, that they found that. That the. Construction of more, um. Units at smaller sizes which may. Need, a need that exists for smaller units was greatly, of course, um, you know, uh. Improved or pushed along by having this cap on the maximum. Uh, this is just, you know, it's not.
Right, right.
Totally applicable, obviously, in this, in this scenario, but it was interesting to think about, like, well, what are the, the, the sort of unintended consequences of this type of densification? Or, or what, or, 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 you know, aside from. Like if the state is pushing for, uh, having more housing be allowed in more places, um. It can, it can sometimes leave things like unit size out of the question, and I think that including that kind of discussion is really important in terms of having side.
Is there any lead, I mean, one of the things we were looking into is community land trust.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because they're so real.
Yeah.
It does the job, right? Now it's on a small scale, but an interesting question is, is there a way? To promote that more with, rather than, you know, have it being led by an M G O, is there a way? To incorporate that?
Well, I, I have said this before, so I, I used to live in First City, Utah, which is not considered a, a horrible place to live. And yet it has huge needs, I mean, frankly, from the service sector, so you got a lot of people with a lot of wealth who are like. I want restaurants and shops and, you know, things that require people who don't. Earn enough to live there, it became a real problem, and so the city and county responded with all sorts of innovative housing. Options, and one of them that was really interesting is that if a developer was going to build, uh, a project. That they were required to put a certain percentage of the units in a deed-restricted. Uh, sort of control for appreciation, so somebody could get a homeownership, but the appreciation rate of those units. Would grow at a very predictable slower rate than maybe what the market threw at, and so there was no underlying nonprofit who was. Uh, having to buy the land and manage it, and it's just. If you were a firefighter or a teacher, or, I mean, there were several models that they used there, you could qualify for buying the home and you know it. We grow it, no more than five percent a year, and the developer wasn't out money, they were out profit.
Right.
But they weren't out money because they were allowed to sell it at cost plus some factor. So that's another mechanism, but I mean, I think we would all be very interested in how we can do that and, and it's what was missed in Shoreline. By not having a requirement for environmental enhancement and by not requiring a certain percentage of those units be.
Yeah, and in fact, twenty percent, the new twenty-year M F T program, which came back twenty twenty-one. Does have a provision for that exact kind of, be interesting reselling, um, ninety-nine-year, even though the tax exemption itself. The last twenty years, so that, you know, there's examples of that sort of coming in from a municipal level, like you said, instead of from a. Sort of nonprofit community land trust, although those, and there are also city-run. So it would be good to have some research on that perhaps during your work, because the, the bill, the state bill that. Requires the increase that's the allows for a fifty-year deep prescription, so we should be exploring how could we do that? Local zoning or a local code, what would the optionality be there? Because I think we all. Agree with the goal of affordable housing, but as Maddie and comes from, Cody said, we want to find a way to do it in a way that aligns with the character of the community. Preserves that housing for affordability for a period of time.
I also wonder. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at least fifty years, but I'd love to know what are the creative ways of actually enforcing that at the municipal level? Like one idea that I just wonder about, and I don't even know if this is viable, but, you know, requiring kind of registration. Of those units and the publication of the rent that's allowed for under, or of the mortgage or of the rent that's allowed for under the state law, so. Are there other models in Washington or in the Northwest or other, in other communities where similar things have been tried and what are the best practices for us this morning? On the supply question. How do we factor in, and I, you know, just like the work from home for jobs, how do we factor in? Houses that are not presided, that are used as Airbnbs and short-term rentals, because I think that's part of the supply. That other cities have also tackled through licensing and restrictions on your ability to do that, that doesn't require new construction or tearing down. Trees, it just requires a change in, you know, licensing points to make more housing affordable and accessible. So I'd love to consider that. Do you have a, a, do you?
I currently regulate.
Though I don't think you're allowed to have a house that's only an Airbnb, we had a neighbor who, right, it was just a business, nobody lived there. But we're, we don't really have a force.
It's not, it's not against the regulations.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, you're renting out to multiple people of yours.
Yeah.
But we have to have, we could have regulations.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think license, you can get a handle on that through licensing and maybe some annual fee, uh, that kind of thing, so. We just haven't done that because, but we do have a good number, I forget when we looked, Maddie, I think you looked. Online and we had on the street quite a lot of Airbnbs that we didn't know about.
Does, does it, only that are full-time.
Multi-Airbnbs, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And it's another way that affordability is trapped.
I would just comment that I, I actually have a little bit attached to my house, so. Guess, yes, we basically. And I've looked at this question in a lot of different communities because I travel to California and go to places and, um, I was. Surprised at first that the city didn't have any licensing, but then when I'm looking at places like that are actual, uh, kind of. True destinations, I mean, yes, people travel here in my Airbnb's business, but. This is not a destination in, it's not, this isn't Ocean Beach, this is a, you know, a place like that where. You're getting just crazy top dollar and it really, you know, makes sense business-wise to have entire homes that are just business properties. I really don't see that here as a big component or a big risk.
Yeah, I think that's.
Not at all, but, you know, I, I just think some of the, if you read kind of what you see in the media about kind of the. Horror stories about short-term rentals kind of taking over communities. Yeah, that really happens, this isn't a, this isn't the community that's, that's real life way, but, um. But I think it's a really good thing to, to talk about and, and so, you know, but. Yep, and I can easily figure out how many people are listed on.
Yeah.
Let's get back, get back on track.
Yeah, so I really look forward to having more of these discussions, especially once we have some more numbers to sort of look at and talk through and. Understand more of these, uh, for these issues. Anything else you want to talk about until you sort of turn over to go through more than sort of the legislative piece and what that, what that means.
I think let's, let's get it.
Uh, so I put you guys aside just to go over and obviously you have all been paying attention and, uh. Probably know all of this already, so you didn't, don't need to labor it, but, uh, I would be good to just all get on the same page about all three of these bills. That are closely related to housing, H B twelve twenty. Um, requires two different analyses, the first one, uh, is to show land capacity, not just total capacity, but. Capacity to meet the needs of moderate, low, very low and extremely low income households, which are all defined by the percentage of the area median income. And also capacity for permanent support housing and emergency housing. And the second half requires, uh, a sort of more qualitative analysis of, um. Uh, of adequate provisions that these types of housing can be allowed beyond just the land capacity, so these are things like. Uh, gas and funding, development regulations, uh, et cetera, and so, um, taking. The first part briefly, um. As we've been talking about, we all know the state allocates the population down to the counties, the counties allocate the targets down to jurisdictions, the, um. Requirement for Lake Forest Park's conference plan here is eight hundred and seventy new permanent units and now is in addition. And now is in addition, there's a hundred and sixty six emergency housing units, which are required to plan for. And this is the breakdown by percentage of area median income, so. Uh, you have households earning under thirty percent of the area median income, these are divided into two categories, we'll talk about in the next slide. And then you have sort of. Lower middle income bands here, thirty, fifty, and fifty to eighty, and then you have higher income units here, so. The allocation is obviously strongly skewed towards these lower income units. With some of this. The. Breakdown of those thirty percent units that I mentioned. Is into permanent supportive housing units and non-permanent supportive housing units. So permanent supportive housing units referred to, I just put this definition in here, it's essentially. You know, housing combined with services. So for people who have many experiences homelessness or otherwise need help, you know, maintaining habitability. And non-permanent supportive housing units that are serving these low income households are assumed in this analysis basically to be. Multi-family developments funded by the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, which is, you know, how most of the most deeply affordable units.
But I stopped you there, so, Commissioners, we do have zoning for permanent supportive housing and speed, could you? Just give us a current like summary of what we have right now in terms of. Actual units and. And potential on permanence or housing, well, so I thought we were well covered there.
The the key here is that you're not to ask, whatever is out there, you have additional capacity, so we have interim regulations. Well, they're 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 in effect, so that if somebody came in and said, I wanted to. Whatever, you know, turn this. That's what usually happens, the hotel gets turned into. Uh, and it's it's allowing the code, not including that happening. Uh, but I don't have a sense of like how many units.
Do you know how many are currently? Because I know we have a good number. Those just.
That's different.
Okay.
Yeah, so so this is really, um, you know. The whatever we have is kind of a floor, correct, and and this is in addition to whatever's going on.
Okay, thanks, do you, do we license this, the group homes?
Uh, yeah, the common issue with the state, they're the ones that actually.
Right, and how, do you know how many we have?
What we do is when when the new one is built, we inspect it, to make sure Calvin's aware of what the requirements are. Uh, and so.
Okay, thank you, I I didn't realize that those weren't considered permanent supportive housing.
Yeah, group group quarters are considered separately in the allocation, they're separated out in a different category, and when we get to the full report, it'll all be. So, because there are a lot, a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I I would also, I, so as I should preface it by saying that. None of this regulation, you know, necessarily reprove the fact that you might already have capacity for all these things. But these are just the analysis that we're gonna have to go through step by step to get there, and and finally, there's this emergency. Units component, which is also new and. It refers to shelter capacity essentially, and it's not necessarily existing shelters. But it's the ability to have a shelter or open a shelter, so it's the same kind of thing, and this is mostly still. Uh, through having zoning where you allow a hotel. So.
So we have one site that allows a hotel.
Okay.
Um, or two, but the sound transit taking one of those.
We have one zone.
A one zone, yeah, so, so what happens if your goal is higher than the capacity of yourself?
Of the zone.
Yeah, or what if you, we had no, I mean, we could easily, that site is an unusual site. Usually have no hotels.
Yeah, I think that there's various methods that you can, you know, move these things into compliance if you don't have. Uh, well, in fact, that's what this this chart here on the right is showing. So for all of these types of of housing that we've just been talking about, at different income bands. You basically take your zones and you, you know, this is comprehensive graphics, so it's a little sort of. Texty, but anyway, you uh you you take the zones and you you figure out what kind types of housing you can build in the zone. And then you relate the zone category to the income level that can be provided by that type of housing. Uh, and then you, you know, look at your capacity, compare them, and if there's a deficit, then then there's a, you know, a wide. Uh, menu sort of of actions you can take, so in that case, for example, the shelters would probably be allowing hotels in another zone. Um, or, but there are other other things you can do as well, um. For all of these, there's there's various sort of options that that you can take, so that's what, you know, when we get to that point, we'll be, we'll be looking into this.
Are these rigid by city boundary because, and this is a question I don't get the answer to. Because it seems to me that what we often do is a coalition of newer cities. And, you know, some of the other bigger cities have more, have existing shelter capacity and or other things. For example, we have a new behavioral health center that's gonna go in in Kirkland, and that's Lake Forest Park, Shoreline, Kenmore, Babel, and Kirkland. Right, and and yeah, the facility is.
Yeah, these, well, the the theory behind this process is is that the countywide planning body has. Gone through that process and and allocated these strictly by city boundary. Already, so there was, there was a. There was, there was a process by which these were taken from the county down to the cities. And it was a commerce methodology that that each county then had the opportunity to revise that methodology. And disperse the different income bands between cities.
Ability to negotiate.
And that, that, that process ended in April of this year, so. These are the finalists, yeah. So anyway, um, just to say briefly, uh, the the assumptions of this. Of this analysis, which, which. Are a little brute force. Are that, you know, the lowest income households are served in multifamily zones, moderate income households are served in like duplexes and ADUs. Higher income households are served by single family housing, as we've already been talking about. You know, you should have some smaller naturally occurring portable, uh, single family units here, and there's definitely displacement risks there, you know, as you were describing. So, you know, these, this is the sort of base level of by which this analysis works, but there's also, you know, some little room to look at. The unique characteristics of each city and understand the way in which different levels may fit into different zones, so. That is. The first half, the land capacity, and then the second half is this adequate provisions half. Uh, which is, like I said, much more qualitative, you basically. Look at past housing production and see if there's any barrier, if it shows by the data that they said in this legislation, any barriers to. A future production, and then you kind of look at whether or not those barriers are coming from, you know, something like a market, or if they're coming from things. Uh, that can be controlled, for example, in the zoning code or development regulations. So, you know, there hasn't been much whole family development in Lake Forest Park, obviously, even though there is zoning for it, so that will probably have to be addressed. You know, in some capacity. During this analysis. And. Then, uh, the other two bills, so that all that twelve twenty guys has been pretty much codified in a book. Uh, by by commerce, and there's, there's a lot of that whole process, you know, set out as a series of steps that you have to take. HB eleven, ten, and thirteen thirty seven are newer, they were passed this year, and such detailed guidance doesn't yet exist for them, but it will soon. And whatever commerce leads by soon, your guess is a good one, hopefully this fall, theoretically, it's this fall. So, uh, HB eleven, ten is requiring middle housing on residential lots, uh, at these duplexes in Lake Forest Park. There is this alternative compliance path which has two components. The alternative compliance path means that only seventy five percent of your lot would be required to allow duplexes. And you can. You know, sort of achieve this alternative path if ha- twenty five percent of your lots are in critical areas, and I just put the critical areas out here because there's a lot in the city, obviously. As we saw when you're driving around today. And or, uh, you can also undertake an alternative compliance path based on displacement. And an analysis of displacement risk, so that may be something to consider, for example, with. Uh, as a way to sort of mitigate against this. Turn into six boxes or whatever, uh, and then there's some lower parking mandates that will be required around transit, which is not gonna be a. Very large area of the city, but we'll be here at least.
On that, before you move on.
Yeah.
The parking mandates, um, since BRT has been delayed even till well beyond.
Yeah.
The update, and I will be curious to know what legally what mandates we actually have.
Yeah, well, you you mentioned that, right, we we've had good experiences going back and forth with. Because we see with commerce and sort of understanding if there's any leeway in that regard, so we can definitely initiate those conversations.
And I think we mentioned this maybe in the interview, but just to underscore, um, sound transit has delayed our parking garage until twenty forty. Four, four.
Okay, okay.
And so if bus rapid transit does come on in twenty twenty eight or sometime after, there's this gap in. In that parking that that was part of that project, by some magical invention of their own making. They don't have an obligation of that, but yet they have an obligation for the other, so it's a little confusing. But but especially because of our sidewalk issues or lack of sidewalks, um, that becomes kind of. Just as an insight for our community. Why, it's not strictly, oh, we don't want people parking on the street, it's that we already have challenges with safe passages, pedestrians and cyclists. And so I just wanted to tune you in that 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 will, you know, be something that we need to come to the table, really prepared to. Figure out what we have to do and don't have to do and what other. You know, for anything we do have to do, what other opportunities we have to improve that pedestrian level, uh, safety issues.
So there's three, uh, bus stations where this would be an issue, uh. One is a town center, but there's homes, Stone's Road, who whose backyard, but, you know, are on town center, so they. Those neighborhoods, uh, would be heavily impacted, there's one sixty fifth. Uh, and Babel Way, and there's one fifty third of Babel Way, all of which have. Uh, residential homes and limited parking opportunity. So, uh, I think that there is concern about that.
So increased pressure on our police department, which is already, you know, challenged with staffing that. Uh, I just think it's a cue that we have a lot of concerns as a community, because we're small and we don't have the ability to just. Sort of pop up and suddenly have the police force necessary to manage. Loads of car break-ins or safety related issues, and so it's just being mindful of the implications of this.
And related to, you know, bike pedestrian safety and. School, things like that, that's, you know, fair peers, who as you mentioned in the interview, we'll definitely be interacting with them in terms of. Where might some of this new growth be occurring, ensuring that those safety concerns are mitigated as as much as possible with the plans?
Thank you.
Uh, and finally, the ED legislation, which we've of course also already been talking about. It has a bunch of requirements, uh, there will be detailed guidance in this coming conference as well. Uh, all cities will be required to allow two ADUs, dash four detached. There's other requirements, capping impact, the these banning owner occupancy requirements. There's, this is also gonna come up against those parking requirements near the transit, near the BRT. And some other various ADU production that. So, that'll probably require some, obviously, some change to ADU to some degree, uh, and as you were mentioning earlier. Bill, both bills require compliance six months after the compliance update has passed, or a model code will be imposed, so obviously. We want that, the model code imposed, um, so there will be some leeway, though, between, you know, this process. And the actual code change, uh, date requirements, but obviously they could, you know, should be informed by this.
So how does the, um, duplex and the one extra unit. I'm a single family lot for duplex and the two ADUs, um, how does that? I'm I'm now, I thought I understood it, and now I don't, of your presentation. Okay.
So essentially four units.
For a single family.
That needs to be allowed, permitted. But 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 they, but they, because one is a duplex and one is, when are ADUs, they, you know, they can have different requirements for. For example, or, you know.
Is anything in this law, so I see that it takes away something we do have, which is another one, it's a requirement. Uh, we don't require, I think we do require one extra setback. For an ADU from the back fence line. But is there anything in this new legislation I can find about changing height restrictions, so whatever we allow for a single family? House on height, can we? Eat that, and also we have, uh, uh, impervious surface limits. Entry, tree protection required.
I don't believe there's strict guidance on sort of some of those, not all. Yes, um, requirements are as strictly are are strictly handed down. There is a way at local level. Some of that, in that regard, but there are, there are size. You can't assert the size to certain, there's a. You can't, uh, require a unit to be more than one thousand. They can be smaller than that, you can't require an ADU to be larger than a house. There, there is, I don't remember the, I haven't memorized all the things, yeah, but there. There is a tree, uh, there's some type of tree version in that, I can't remember what it is. I don't think it overrides all local tree ordinances or anything, but there there, I remember there is some mention of treaty, uh, we're in system, so we'll have to look.
Tree, uh, it'd be like critical areas, you can say.
Yes, yes.
You don't have to build them up.
Yeah, of course.
Have to destroy your exceptional trees.
Yeah.
I think it's like, uh, our dockhomes that are built here on lots that are completely encumbered by critical area, they have. The, they can exercise the reasonable use of situation. For the house, but they they don't then also get to build. It's that's that was no longer reasonably used, the reasonable uses, whatever they got.
Yeah, well, that's, that'll probably be tested, yeah, so that's something to consider.
Like, is it, well, no, he did, and and so like there, I think those are just things that, like, we we need to grapple with.
Well, like you said, the the official guidance on these is not yet come out either, so that's something that will be.
Suppose you have a duplex or a single family house, you literally don't have room for an ADU, I mean, so then. It's not required on all residential lots that. Can't actually.
Right, yeah, it's just that it's permitted. It's permitted, but it's not. Right, the point is that you can't, you can't have a zone where it's not allowed. But even if there's no lot in that zone where your cookies will be stolen because of the size of the lots, you still have to have.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all, that's all I've slide by.
We're so glad you're staying engaged.
No, really.
Only the peak.
It's, I mean, it's, I.
No, this is great, you definitely have people who. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? We're starting to run a little low on time, but do you have any questions of our, our consultants? No, yes. Yeah, that was.
And have the the lemon. Yeah, I I got beat up. So, next time. What was the other? Oh, we got, yeah.
I got, you guys have the menu online. Okay, so I'm gonna whip us through, we're very excited for what comes next, and I presume for our next gathering. You'll have to send out information before, so we can be prepared. Okay, um, I'm gonna move us through this because it's also seems the last. Planning commission meeting, and we can't bring beer, so I brought. So you can bear with us while we get through this. Or go, I mean, I don't.
Well, only if you're playing back the run.
Oh. Okay, we'll show each year's state really quickly for you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Say, we want to test our own. Nathan and like a little.
Yeah, yes.
Not gonna see the end of this process.
And I know, really, so we have.
You're responsible. I mean, I'm gonna email him.
Yeah. Where that. Before making my always, well.
Oh, I wanna know.
No, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. I would use more than happy.
There we go.
Did you get one more? Oh, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will leave this off, Sherry, we're sorry to not have you here. Um, I think that, you know, I, we've uh, had the privilege of Steve, um, leading uh, our planning department here in our city for nineteen years, and uh, we are a very engaged community, so I know that has created uh, not just joy, but lots of heartbreak. Thank you for, um, thank you for being a part of our city for nearly twenty years and uh, for also being a really great mentor to all of us as planning commissioners, as we've attempted to step up and and participate in what goes on in our city. Uh, I think help us all grow, you know, intellectually and be better informed about what it takes to make you know, the policy of our city, so we appreciate all you've done. And and are also incredibly jealous that you're retiring. Okay, it's not beer, but.
Well, I, as I said, my email to you, this is really the most fun I have. With working in planning commissioners and your enthusiasm adds to my enthusiasm in the job. And I love to see planning commissioners go on to be, well, and council, I mean, well, I didn't totally turn them off to the government. And uh, very, 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 so, so it's uh, it's really great to, to work with folks and to see them, you know, engage. And so, you know, I, when it does get tedious, I just remind myself that, you know, I get paid. You guys show up because you love the community and wanna preserve things about it, and you also, they wanna change that. And that's, that's just really. Thanks for all your.
Okay, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
I usually bake, but I've had trouble with my oven. And so this is um, from our, a local business called Hero Lofts in the town center.
Okay. Yeah. Really good.
This has been such a great food night.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, we'll, we'll be excited to see you next time.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks.
Safe travels.
Thank you, ever. We're looking back to you. Uh, we're gonna make it. We're, we're fine.
I'm driving.
Are you having a C pack or pay?
Did you, no, I don't, there should be, I tell from pain, did you know we have another?
Paying so much easier now.
You can also take the trailer, which is really fun.
Yeah, I mean.
But not always reliable.
Yeah.
So that's a, as a former Portland commuter, I can tell you about all methods of travel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you say, no, I, I go up and I'm like, I'm, I have. Yeah, it's like, you know, not going like, no, the chat.
Yours has bigger pistachios in it, though.
I know, I like, I like. Mine is like big or like powder. I couldn't be that nice, yeah.
I like the nuts.
But you see, this is better. This is just like.
I don't know about that.
Different.
Yeah, I like the big nuts.
Yeah, me too, honey nuts.
Okay, well, on that note, uh, new business, any new business?
Sorry, I talk so much, but I have a lot of questions.
You were passionate today. Um, okay, well, it's all you know.
Uh, yes, or I, I just wanted to say, uh, yoga in the parks, nine AM. Battle of the Bands coming up, I just met with the Parks Board yesterday. Picnic in the Park is coming up. Uh, they're going to, they're just gonna start working with the consultant and come up with a public engagement schedule and website and uh, so forth. So just um, trying to, I think the challenge for the park is making sure that we have public engagement with some of the local folks, the civic club and the neighbors, a little bit ahead of time, so that they don't feel like they didn't hear about it, and we have a few people. So I do think Deputy Mayor French, who lives on that street, should lead that for how, how does mine personally here. Um, the retain wall ordinance, um, updates to that and potentially a vote on the final ordinance scheduled for tomorrow night. Uh, we have a couple of, in the, if you happen to take a look at the public hearing, notice there are a couple of possible changes that were recommended in comments from the community that we're considering, but our city attorney said before we adopted them, we should technically have another public hearing just to be safe. As far as we know, we don't have any objections, so that's a.
We have one small modification structurally, but it's just another foot to put in that distance, you know, in the light pockets.
Oh, okay.
But, other than that.
Well, I'm hoping we can have. I, I'm hoping we can have the middle of the wall by pockets, that's what we discussed. But anyway, uh, the tree ordinance is, was adopted interim, that's not um, subject to the public hearing that's coming up. Um, the, I have um, continued to lobby for uh, getting the final reasonable use exemption and sign ordinance um, decided by the council and um, our city administrator. Yes.
Are you gonna be able to discuss um, the working of your special community at the whole?
Right.
I think, as I've looked at it with Kim, which is a double check, it's just pretty buggy, that's worth.
Yes, that was really, I think, the only thing, yeah.
Then with that, then you look up people, commerce and see.
And I don't think there were any hanging chat issues with the sign. When we discussed it, so.
I, I.
I was surprised that we hadn't voted on, honestly. I was like, wait, we didn't vote on the final sign. I thought we did.
I think we only had one discussion on meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just when, when they did.
I just. It, it was my goal, Steve, to say we could not leave till these two were finally adopted, but I guess.
I got out anyway.
I didn't survive, but uh, also um, Sound Transit, if you didn't see it, is holding a public meeting the evening of uh, of August second. Uh, I'm afraid from looking at the description, it's only an hour and a half, and they're, they're saying they're going to use a half hour to tell us how they responded to the community and what issues the community can still comment on. So I'm not really looking forward to that evening that much. So the meeting with the CEO was very, I thought, very good, but because she's very talented in a public.
That's why I'm watching if you were part of that meeting.
Yes.
Weeks ago, uh, but.
But I think the concern is that what's, what's, what, what's real about what she and her team are willing to try to change with the board and the system expansion committee, so.
So tomorrow night, or I guess it'd be tomorrow, I think it, they're doing um, their final baseline, which is, it sets the budget, it sets the schedule. That's the last time they go to the board. Um, this meeting, and I got the, this notice about tomorrow, a payment after, but I can have some splash, but it will go out tomorrow. To our residents, but basically, it's thirty minute presentation, hour question, question and answer. Um, clarifying issues related to tree impacts, huge jumps, station size, or hidden malls, noise, and environmental impacts. Share what can be made of this little design, so.
Yes, and they were, they actually sent a email to, or a letter to Sheridan Beach. Uh, community club saying something like, we're ready to move. This was before the CEO came saying, we're ready to move on to your concerns about construction impacts. So it was really, if it's just the staff coming again, I, I really.
My understanding.
Okay, well, she is, she is very good, and but what happens when she goes home is the question.
There was a lot of like, we hear your concerns, and then the part that wasn't said was, we're not gonna do anything about them.
Yeah, I'm concerned that that's the subtext.
I would say this is something also for us to be really considered of in our comprehensive planning, that it feels like at times, and this is just my opinion. Um, that's one way in which our community can be marginalized is by saying, oh, those people, like, worst part are either NIMBY or they really love their trees and birds, and it doesn't help that sometimes community members come up and say, I love the birds, I hate to see them. Yeah, it's like, we need to, I think, uh, pivot on, on the, the part that really matters, and it's very clear by all of the documents that guide our city that we're very concerned with climate and climate resilience and being a good environmental partner in our region and continuing to provide the thermal regulation benefits that our tree can, if we covered, you know, coverage provides, that it, it isn't just for our benefit because we find so much comfort in seeing green trees outside. It is actually part of our science.
Yeah.
It's informed by science, we are ahead of the game compared to many of our neighbors, so we might be behind the game on other things. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't let slide the things that we are, you know, strong in. Um, and, and so I just caution us against these brands that we are tree hugging, NIMBY community, and instead we're a community driven by science and understanding the value of, of the, the pressure we put on ourselves um, through policy to protect those critical areas and every coverage.
I was very impressed by our community comments because they were diverse and they were very professional. I was just so impressed, yeah.
I was just gonna, let's continue to bring that message back to the uh, compliance process.
Yeah, good point. Okay, um, so that's all I had regarding residential parking. Um, there is a topic that will probably take up in a couple of months, which is I had approval from the council to set up a process if, you know, sixty or so percent of the residents in an area wanted to set up for certain hours or certain times, certain days, a residential parking program, it would have to kind of pay for itself. But uh, using Kirkland's example, I had actually put, you know, a discussion draft together. And so I still think whether it's the Lakefront Park or Sound Transit, having a process in place, not setting up any zones, but having a process for community to petition for that makes sense. So just, uh, it may be something that you'd like input at some point from the planning commission on, if, if, uh, it need be. But uh, uh, anyway, it is a way to deal with some of those potential neighborhood impacts, especially if we um, aren't able to um, add, have parking with some development.
Is that, by any chance, something that we can have some information by the neighborhood, no doubt? Because that would be a great time for us, we're gonna be on our streets, talking with our neighbors and.
It's not, I don't think it's ready. It's not ready, that's what I said, I think, um, we have been so busy with the sound transit related stuff, and I would like to get the previous recommendations from the planning commission handled, so it can be done anytime, maybe in the next six months or so, we get.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Thank you. And just understanding, she's right, watch that council meeting. Uh, if, as you listen to our, our neighbors talk, they make many excellent points, you can decide for yourself, you know, what resonates for you or not, but but I think by and large, the broader community is not at all aware of what exactly is gonna be happening since five twenty two in the coming years. And it's a nice way for you to quickly be informed about their workplace.
Did you say those two weeks ago?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, two Thursdays ago.
I hadn't heard uh, till, till that meeting, I believe, or was it, anyway, a recent meeting. Cause council member Goldman, um, it doesn't have a car and takes the bus and really follows the bus route issues that we are going to lose net for bus service um, on Baffle Way. So uh, it, overall, we're going to have less bus service and no direct downtown bus service compared to, you know, what we had before, so.
I think what was nice too about that meeting is I've heard a lot of that information, but they're all from different sources. So, so as each member of the public came up to say something about it, it was actually grabbing on and elevating like, how many dump trucks full of dirt are gonna be passing through, what's that gonna be doing, and blah, blah, blah. Uh, okay, uh, mindful of the fact that we're over, are there any uh, reports and announcements for staff?
Um, other than your, your next meeting coming up pretty quick.
Yes, very.
August eight.
Yeah.
So, so, but uh, I think, you know.
Yeah.
Steve's positions on the street.
It is on the street.
Yeah.
Do you have a search? Uh, like who, or do, or do you need any help with the search for his?
You mean the interview?
Yeah.
Well, I can say yes to you.
Oh, I didn't see.
I, I know that, so. I thought it responded to the thank you, I'm happy.
Oh, okay, well. I know, I'm, yeah. Okay, very good, um, uh, we don't have anybody here to make additional citizens' comments. Um, I'm not sure what our agenda is for the next meeting unless we hear something from.
Something on top plan.
Yeah, that's. Uh, okay. Yeah.
We do not have a contract with them, yeah, we gotta get counsel for that contract, and that will be on.
We might wanna postpone that meeting because it feels out of town, yeah.
And I forgot to mention earlier, I do have a conflict on the next weekend.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, that, that might be, it might be nice to bump it, but we'll, we'll communicate over email and. Very available for other days. Um, also, I hope you enjoyed tonight, um, generally speaking, Sharid and, and those of you in the room. Um, when we start getting into the TV packy part of the, you know, work with our consultant partners, how willing are you to take an extra meeting or two during that, you know, chunk of time, if we need that versus when you're skimming um, in the two hours we have in our city?
Really willing, it would be great if we can kind of align on some expectations for how soon we get a pre read uh, from them, because if we could have the pre read in a little or advance, um, that would be really helpful in making the use of the meeting time efficient. But then.
Absolutely.
So both.
Okay, all right, great.
I'm sorry that we didn't have access to this process.
Okay, but I just, you know, some people know like, oh, this crazy ball, I mean, or whatever. Um, okay, we'll try to work on maybe at least getting some things calendered and then we can cancel.
Add to that, right, if at all possible to kind of project out when we'll go speaking.
Definitely, okay, we'll work on that. Okay, well, I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn. So. Excellent, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
At a post. All right, we are adjourned, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I, I. Something, but you're.
Your oven gets.
Stand, they sure exciting, you know, my mind.
Bro.
Years before they go out, I don't know, in my, in my, it's my. People thinking it's the fan, they've been pushing. And she said, oh, we'll have a side visit or at the. And I said, no, let's do. It's got, it's so much. I think because I'm waiting for it, apparently she stopped.
Oh, you're so welcome.
We're gonna interview.
I, I may be a stealth personnel there, watching McSky.
One of the characters.
I was hoping that I don't want the first. You know, that they're there.